Okay, thank you. Uh, hello, everybody. Village Warble meeting set up here August 22nd, 2023. And I'd like to roll call please from I'm a good treasurer.
Sholby?
Here.
Shonburn?
Here.
Samuel?
Here.
Walter?
Yeah.
This guy.
Here. Claire Corn. Okay, everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have approval of our agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed say aye. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna open it up to a public comment at this time at 6:02 PM on anything just not on our agenda for this evening. Anybody who wants to, wants to remind me that I don't know what we got on our agenda. I appreciate the question, people come in. So you can talk as we do our meeting. If something comes up, just raise your hand and you're more than welcome to part of it, okay? Alright. So, let's get to it. Our consent agenda. Our minutes of the council meeting of July 25th, 2023. The council payable, investment report, revenue and pension report, and the balance. Everybody get a chance to look at that and, um, have any questions or you can make a motion?
On the accounts payable, uh, to see that there's rainy service for winching out the back truck. We got it stuck.
We got it stuck.
Where?
Right at the beginning. We're going number one, we're going number two.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. I thought it got stuck somewhere in town.
No, it's just all the way in. We were trying to back off some of the duckweed that, um, that was on there and it died so. And Clay Road. I came in just after that got done and prior to this, probably four or five years ago, we tried to do it ourselves and it made it worse. So it was nice for them when it didn't go correctly, just stop and get the winch. But you're right, and it was the worst rainy, the most that mess we had.
Things are real soft right now.
But I wasn't, uh, I was, I was there as soon as they're like, uh, what do we do here? So.
That's the only question that I have.
Okay.
I'm making motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Taken by Sandra. Any questions on anymore? Sandra, do roll call please.
Sholby?
Yes.
Shonburn?
Yes.
Neil Hill?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Accords on 2022 and 2023 on audit presentation report. How is it?
I'll come up here so you can all see me. Um, I believe you all have a packet for the audit, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I'm just gonna go through kind of a basic summary of it high level and throughout any of it, feel free to ask any questions or if you've gone through it, just ask anything. It should be fairly similar to last year, I would imagine. If you don't know me, I'm Ian, I was one of the auditors on the, um, audit this year for the village, so. Uh, if you go a couple pages in, it's page one, but it's a few pages in right after the table of contents. This is the independent auditor's report. It states what our opinion was, um, on the financial statements that were given to us by the village. Um, in the opinion section, second paragraph, uh, of the whole thing, um, this is where we state what our opinion is, um, and I'll read it to you. In our opinion, the financial statements per two above present clearly in all material respects the respective financial position of the village, um, as of March 30th, 23. So what that is, it's the wording or verbiage for an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, the best opinion the village could receive for an audit. Um, it's like, there's nothing better than even done to get a better opinion, so in essence, we pass the audit, um, this year.
So, so we got the best, I mean, fires to opinion of how we got our finances and our own structure, it's?
Yeah, there's no better opinion we could give you and the state wouldn't accept anything less than this, so we make sure you're in order to get that, so.
Thank you.
A couple more pages down to page five. This is the management discussion and analysis that kind of goes between the differences between 2022 and the 23 fiscal year. Uh, if you look at the financial highlights, uh, the first ballpoint, the assets, um, and for inputs of the village exceeded its liabilities, so you had excess assets and liabilities of about eight million. Um, of that amount, a little over three million is unrestricted, meaning it can use for anything. The difference between the eight million and the three million is mainly built up of your, um, capital assets or, uh, anything that's not easily spendable. The village building is not easily spendable, so that isn't considered unrestricted. Um, and there's other amounts that go into there, but that's the main part, your sewer system, water system, that stuff isn't easily, um, spendable, so that's the difference between the two of them. Second ballpoint, your revenues were about 2.4 million and expenses were 2.2 million approximately, um, which led to about a close to 200K increase in a position, so excess revenues over expenses for the year. Then your governmental funds, so all funds excluding your water and sewer funds, um, had fund balances of a little over 800,000, which was an increase of 172, um, over the year. So when your governmental funds only in excess of, uh, revenues of 172K over expenses, so receiving more than spending. And then in your general fund specifically, which is your main fund for the village, you had 372,000 of fund balance, which equates to about 38% of your annual expenditures. So if you, for instance, if you ran out of money and just stopped having money coming in, you would survive all 38% of the year. So it's a pretty sizable fund balance where you can survive a fair amount for whatever reason, cash flow issues. Couple more pages down to page eight, this is kind of the overview in specific areas of your finances. It's the balance sheet, it shows all of your assets, cash and your liabilities, anything that you owe to anybody. Um, and it shows the difference between 2022 and 23. The next page shows your significant changes, um, at the top of it. Your due from governments, meaning think items you're supposed to receive from other governments decreased about 91K, which is a large, due largely to your saw grant coming in. Um, last year without saying it, in 23 it came in, so, um, you see that cash, your accrued liabilities decreased about 220K, um, which was largely due to you paying off all of your IRS, um, back taxes and interest and penalties for, um, everything that occurred in 22. Uh, and then your unearned revenues decreased about 68,000, which was due to spending your ARPA funding a fair, a fair amount, so. I believe there's still more of ARPA, if I'm not mistaken, but you spent a fair amount of it, so.
Say that one more time for the, this 68,000, eight, three, four.
Your unearned revenues, you received ARPA in 2022, but you hadn't spent it yet, and so in essence, you're liable to spend it. And in 23, you did spend it, so that decreased that liability and showed your revenue that you spent your ARPA funding on ineligible expenses, so.
You worked on that, Sandra, help. Thank you. Yep.
Uh, and then you have your, uh, revenues and expenses for changes in that position, I guess, back graph right there that shows, um, all the revenues you got between 22 and 23, and then any differences in all of your expenses that were spent for each specific function of the government. You had about an increase of 216K in operating grants, um, which was largely due to your saw grants, uh, coming in and being spent. Charges for services decreased, which is a revenue for about 105K, which, uh, was due to decreased building permits coming in during the year. Uh, and then your sewer expenses increased 150K largely due to spending your saw grant, so those were correlated together. Uh, page 11 shows your revenues and expenses based on what type of revenue is providing the most. So your taxes provides 47%, grants provides 23%, so on and so forth, and then same with governmental, um, expenses. You can see what type of functions you're spending your money on, um, just in that format. Page 14 to page 22 are all of your basic financial statements, and it'll show what I just went over kind of for 23. And then it'll also show each specific fund so that you can see how all of your funds are doing financially. As far as I'm aware, all of them are doing fine, so there's no reason to. You, you're not in any deficits or anything, um, but just if you wanted more information, breaks it down page one. Uh, and then your pension is doing pretty well, um, due to lacking, I guess, investment performance in 20, in calendar year 22, um, your pension liability increased slightly, but it's still almost entirely funded. So when the, I'm guessing this year the market's doing a bit better, so next year it'll probably be, you'll be ahead in excess, um, of funds in your pension, um, fund, so. That's about all I had. Do you have any questions or anything specific you wanted to ask about?
Did you work on our Village Warble prior to this year?
I worked on it, yeah. I believe 22 I worked on it and maybe 21 if I remember correctly, so this will be the second or third year I've worked on it.
So for the Village Warble, you see forward movement?
Yeah, for sure, especially against last year. Last year, there was a lot of
Expense.
Uh, expense as well as just oddities and the financials that Planet as well as us realized, so. There weren't, there wasn't any of that this year.
Well, get rid of the, held up some of the people using the word COVID, and we actually got some of the stuff landed that we were waiting for.
Yeah, and Jessica, um, as well as yourself, and I forget her name, but the deputy clerk, she, everybody who was involved in the audit process was really easy to work with. Caitlin from Planet was also helpful as well, so.
Tammy.
Yeah, Tammy.
Tammy.
Yep.
So I thought it was a pretty clean audit. I think we're done pretty early compared to prior to yourself. You can tell that it went a lot smoother.
Does any of the residents understand or have any questions on the Village Warble? Now's the time, so we're looking pretty healthy.
Yeah, as far as I can go, doing pretty well.
Good. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And do you mind if I add out or do you have any other questions?
That's why we put you, Jessica, who put you at the front.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, good night.
Great answer, thank you. This is awesome. I like it. And then council want to talk about what you mentioned, and we're all good to go to the next program.
I'm happy.
Okay.
Again, we don't have a police officer here for the report, other than we'll just look at what would be bringing it in. Thanks again.
Thank you, everyone.
Of course, he said, uh,
Diavdi.
Diav, yeah.
Diavdi, yep. Okay, this, Diav and Lucine will have to go back and forth on the programs we've been dealing with.
I didn't know, I'm noticing that he has for school contact hours on, let me see, it's like seven, it's a change. Seven, can I believe that says? He's got one and a half hours. Yes. Okay, and his school is not in.
Still maybe patrolling the school rings.
Well, the staff's down there too, I mean, obviously, uh, the stoners and all that stuff.
Correct, and I understand that, but is there any way, I know that we had talked about it, Sam, at our last meeting, that we can get a better idea of what he is doing, because I'm seeing that he's giving us the out of village hours broken down a little bit, so for the village, you know, he's giving us over 2.5 on certain days, but when it comes into the village, we're not really getting that, you know, what he's doing per se. For the accountability, accountability of what he actually is doing for his hours. I know that a lot of people inside the village as well as here are, they're questioning.
I've seen different extra hours of what he's been doing. School has started, I did get a call on Friday, like three Fridays ago, from the England County Sheriff's Department, that our contract comes up during the June meeting. And then I said, we are interested in getting our eight hours back. He did today, it's more, uh, deputies are hired, so there's a possibility they're gonna come with more than 40 hours. I, I said, and then I said, is there any way we can have an umbrella where we have more than 40? So I, I pushed that button too. So we have had that in front of us, because everybody working on that, it's just that we got more deputies left. So that's the only way that's gonna fix that. We've asked him three times what he mentioned about how to define his hours better. I don't know whether the commander write out a paper sheet in the office.
I know there's been questions about Dings, times, and hours, but I mean, this, this report is more granularity than we've gotten in years, and this is a huge improvement.
I agree. I just know that a lot of people on the village are asking.
I mean, I don't know, other than being here monthly and saying, you know, of the X amount of hours I was at the school, you know, talk to students, do this, do that, I don't, I don't know a better way to capture it.
But at least that would give them some ideas of when we're being asked, and you can say, this is kind of what he's doing when he's at the school instead of us saying he's at the school, and say, well, this is what he is doing while he's there, he's doing things.
Right.
I, um, the, uh, teacher gets, uh, a, or the, he gave me, I guess, a bill.
Right, obviously, yeah.
Where do we hand that in? To Chris?
Yeah, sorry, I know. He said, have them run along with him so they can see what's going on. I was like, that's the best.
I mean, is there, is there, uh, at all way to, I mean, it's be only curvy to you guys, but a way to get like a GPS of his whereabouts while he's on the block, you know, I mean, it would be enough to just show him and roam around or where he's at or whatever. I don't want to be like, you know, obvious, no, but I've even seen that a ton of people are questioning because they don't ever see him and they don't know where he's at. When school is in session, it's so understandable because, you know, a lot of times I'd see him up at school, you know, and he parked back by his car and stuff. So people won't see him on the road, I haven't seen him very much throughout the day, here and there, I'll say trafficking, uh, like, you know, over by the store or whatever, but.
We definitely need more hours. Cause I had this conversation with a couple of them, like actually the sheriff called me, not the sheriff, one of the assistants, uh, the sheriff. I said, people are racing, they're a cop, and we just need more coverage.
Yeah.
So he thought he can bring that to our table, so he got more. So we really would like to have more than 40 hours.
Yeah. I mean, I think it'd be nice to see, you know, that traffic stopping doesn't really do a huge benefit besides slowing traffic down while he's there. Um, I mean, I've always thought it'd be good if the cop was actively patrolling and moving, yeah, if he comes up to the front of the road and someone's flying by, go after him. But, um, I just think that would be, you know, be, I think it would help the residents too feel more, uh, calm if they saw the car driving up and down the road, actually actively patrolling.
Take mention that we did neighborhood watch, we got some people that want to volunteer their time to help us do that, correct? Do that, if you want to volunteer, um, drive around the town, call card, do neighborhood watch, or it gives apples not that credit of. Make sure, my money. Yes?
I would request, I would request more control on Main Street now. When the barrels were up, it was the Autobahn, when the construction workers were there working with the barrels for the manholes, they were speeding by them at 35, 40 miles an hour. So now that the barrel's down, it's at the Autobahn.
So that was brought to their attention. Per my phone conversation, we need to be increased with our deputy powers. They seem pretty confident that you can do that more, but the contract doesn't come up till January, but I'll, I'll continue to talk, we'll see if we increase it before then. Apparently, you've heard that we have the funds to use that so we can get our town slowed down. I'm not even disagree with that, there's places that people are not driving.
Is he also trolling during school so that the businesses' parking lots aren't being blocked while the people are waiting for their children? So it's not harming our local businesses that we have left there?
Trying to understand the question.
So my husband came home the other day and the cars were lined up and they were blocking Bob's parking lot, all the entrance and the exit.
I got you.
I mean, we have very few businesses left in town, but we would want to harm the business with people not able to get to.
What, I think if that, was that what the, the new, did you see the new lights faded down?
I think that was, yeah, you're right, I, that was before the lines.
Well, we're doing forward movement and we know we need more placing, so we're gonna push that. We're not backing that off, so that's what we need to do. Just went through time where the Sheriff's Department couldn't give us enough people, but I think it's gonna come back around, so that should be able to be noticed. Work better if we have two deputies. It fires to put our own police department in, we need a lot more people to volunteer and help with that versus what we have here as a council. It's gonna take a lot of work to do that. We prefer to stay within the county. So, okay, any other questions on the Sheriff's Department? Okay, let's go to Shane Mettore, our EPW supervisor.
Busy, um, weather's been nice, grass has been growing. Got the compliance sampling done for the year, other than the, the monthly back to samples of VOCs and SOCs and P PAS, and they've all been done for our routine yearly testing. We took out the symbol main windows in lawhouse one and two and boarded those up and painted the lawhouse. We're gonna go through, that was part of our energy evaluation that we had a while back, and that was one of the suggestions that they made is to get rid of those windows and then insulate it good. There's a lot of energy that just wasted in that block, knowing in the wintertime, so. Uh, and the Main Street project, Main Street project's been going good. We've got just a few more things, uh, to go over and we should be good with that. And Appalene project, I believe, is, we've got a pre-construction meeting on that tomorrow, and then that's gonna take out, so.
That, would that be up here at 9:00 AM? Yeah. Thank you. Anybody have some council notes they've got?
Diavdi?
That's it. Anything on the lawnmower?
Uh, lawnmower is, we took that to Superior Saw. Um, they said it's completely normal for it to blow oil out of the dipstick tube, but the oil cap's not tight, and I know it's not. So there's another, there's capital equipment that's other than duet, we're gonna go pick it up from them, take it to the other dealer, because we've already talked to them about it. Uh, smoke's on start, a white smoke, and it, uh, it's gotta let it blow by, so what it tells me is probably a problem that we have here.
So, we still have warranty, so we gotta continue to push this because they let us go another, what, 60 days and then it's out, right?
October.
October.
So.
We gotta get the right person, so we don't get stuck with that.
Yeah.
Alright, to add to Shane's, we've been, we have the dump truck that we're continuing to work with with the transmission issue. We, um, right now is at Hitchcock Trucking Repair, and we think for $4,052, we can do these repairs with taking the bottom part off without pulling the transmission. And we've got some people that communicated with us on the lower store and why we're having trouble with it. We've asked for four quotes for vendors, mainly over by Grand Rapids, DNK was the only one who would actually help us. Their quote, if we record it up there, is $12,765.35. But we talked to two of the other vendors that we work with quite a bit, and they said, with all the work that's, the structure can be damaged, it's at the lower end, it can be taken off and then sent in that way without pulling the transmission. So there were the things that we could do to soften that. I did talk to DNK again, I asked him very nicely for another email of our brand new truck that's coming, that's white for the spring, 2024, which is, they say 300 days, I'm still talking to truck and trailer. I said, uh, mentioned that as we can get this paperwork in front of us, so we all can look at it, uh, stainless box, bottom grader, possibly option on the salt sprayer to be in it, installed, so when it delivers, we can have that with the new truck that's ordered from DNK.
Is it the $12,000 for the transmission repair, is that a complete rebuild?
That was for record up there, and they take a complete out and put another one back in and it goes in.
Okay, so that's probably just a whole new transmission.
So brand new transmissions from $7,381.27.
Yeah.
The labor would be four grand. That's how that works.
Versus Hitchcock would just be repairing what's already in there.
Yes, we just try to put a band-aid on it and try to keep making sure that we don't have extra expense, but if we don't feel comfortable with that, then I'm, I'm trying not to spend this much money with what it's got going on. And you drove it, if, if you drive it nicely, you don't flat foot it, it'll work, but if you get raring on it, then it goes in the limp mode. So there's some sensors underneath it that we could change, and maybe that would prevent that. Versus pulling the whole transmission, but anyway. It's a trial and error.
Wouldn't it have been better to just give him the transmission? It was spent $4,000 and then a month later it backends. Yeah, exactly.
Or you get into it and find it's more than that.
That's why I brought you, but we went to Weller Frontier and Valley, and then we tried Chevy, you know, like, put it to Chevy, and they just, no. Needles, we thought needles would be an asset, so, but yeah, I mean, you guys can pick that around where you want. My hands well, because I, I can't beat everything that's $10,000, $10,000, $10,000.
Yeah, I mean, that truck is, if you put a $12,000 transmission in it, we're probably a $6,000. Yeah, it's not a $12,000 truck.
We're back to the, like, the lawnmower, yeah, but the big thing is, is you're, you're, them, them trucks, nobody should ban off the trucks, they were good trucks for what they did, and they had the right engines. They did have a right transmission, but the lines rotted off and it ran out of oil. Corroded, didn't rot, they corroded.
I'd like to see if we can find somebody else who can quote on, on a rebuild. More than just the one data frame.
Yep, we, we had asked for four quotes for the last three months, and these four vendors, we called them back the last three weeks, because we missed our last meeting, and all got a little small. Well, there is a Jackson Truck Service down in Jackson, it's possible, we can do that, but Bucks up in Lansing, we're on this. And there is, um, I think it's Tim, is that one? It's right on Lance, I can't get, Walker, Walker Truck and Sales, yeah. There you are. We got more than glad to record that out there and record somewhere, do you think that?
I don't like any of those options.
It's just a thought. It's just a, it goes better not, so there, there's some of them, some noise.
Is that the one with the salt box or no?
It's what we need for the salt, that's the salt truck.
Yeah.
We need it. And our new truck that we had all fixed up, that's getting fixed again with MML now, give us approval for $13,000 with the deer damage. For our new pickup, it was all perfect. I don't know if you guys have any of that.
The deer?
Right at the front. Put the radiator out.
I could just imagine, yeah.
See, they're a pickup, all fixed, all fixed up really nice, lasted two weeks, and then great big deer hit the front end of it, put the radiator out.
Shane, you're gonna have to start walking.
I don't worry.
You need to run.
Can you take a hand home?
Salt sprayer.
For $5, yes.
The other thing to think about, rent 52, we'd have to look, is, is there anybody or anywhere where we can rent a truck for two months?
I don't know, any ideas?
But what's the guarantee that we're gonna be getting the new truck?
You won't see it for this winter.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying is if, if we're not confident in the salt, in the salt sprayer truck, rather than Band-Aid it for $4,000 or pay $12,000, would we be better off? I don't know, can you rent one through the winter for $6,000 or $8,000 just to get us through to the new one?
I don't agree with that.
I don't know. I got one at home.
I mean, there's all sorts of equipment rentals out there. I don't, I don't know if there's anybody who does dump trucks or salt spreaders.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a lot of misspellers would like to do that. I don't, some belt don't have anything like that to rent, I don't think so. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Maybe we should check her. What's the, um, I guess, what's the angle with the other dump truck? Like, when the new one comes in, is that one getting broomed? Or is it gonna be still in service until it can't be anymore?
We were trying to find one, slightly used it to take the slack off these two, that would be reasonable to get now and use it and then still keep the new one coming. Yeah.
That's the reason I asked. In that grand scheme of things, if you guys are planning on keeping it and still using it like light duty, I mean, $12,000 for a brand new transmission seems like a, kind of a win, because if you're holding onto it.
Yeah.
You know, like you said, you replace all the solenoids and it still does the same thing, then you're gonna be back here again saying, hey, now we need to put transmission, it's the middle of winter.
Isn't it? Isn't that a truck aging out though? It's nickel and diving outside of that.
Yeah, it's like a 2005, just a bad choice. It's a truck.
But it's salt.
It's just like the John Deere tractor we have for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Where, I forget, what was it for? $8,000 for the four-wheel drive transmission on the John Deere, but we can get a two-wheel drive, but.
Thought you found a cheaper rebuild kit somewhere.
It was nothing rebuilt, but it was one that didn't have front wheel drive. It was rear wheel drive only. Which doesn't sound that bad right now, because everything we try to do just keeps being more costly. And you're right, the sidewalks are narrow for a Florida Ranger. Everybody's gonna get a sod trim job if we get one of the people out, because sidewalks are too narrow.
I mean, is it at all feasible? I mean, what if we put a salt spreader in one of the pickups? You'd have to refill it a lot more often probably, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I start, I used to use a spreader in a pickup, but it was like a three-quarter yard, ounce to yard spreader that was in the back of the truck, but it could be done, actually.
It'd be cool to do that if you knew that you were still gonna get mid-winter, the new truck with the new, all the new stuff, but without having that at all.
A salt spreader on the pickup truck, I mean, that's a, pretty planned, you know, within two years that truck probably gonna be gone.
Okay.
Because then it just destroys the.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, is the salt spreader. Just try and do just enough to make this work and then the salt spreader needs a couple grand worth of.
Yeah, I mean, it needs a new chain and that.
You need a couple grand. Just, it's so.
So I'm try, I'm trying to think, is there any short, you know, any short-term solution to get us through just this winter till the new truck gets here?
Yeah, you and I have to find the one that's all set up, that somebody's in better shape, that's only seven years old. If I, I would try it. I know. And I appreciate what you've done, because we looked it up, but it wasn't strong enough to put puns on it. It was a, it was a actual ink cloud box truck, like two-minute truck.
Was there, here's an odd thing I just saw, obviously. Would there be a way to, see if there'd be, we could contract with AM County or Williamson for them to come through and.
Yeah, I don't know, Williamson has a milk trouble. They, they hire contractors to help them do their roles.
Right.
Can we get their number?
Is there to contract it out? If we don't have, would it be cheaper to contract it out versus?
I don't know.
What happens with that is that we all are here looking at all of us and we're saying, if we had our own equipment, Shane and I would already been out there and we did it, because we see what's happening at three o'clock in the morning, you call the contractor, you know, I've thought about you guys, I'm not quite there yet, I'm gonna be there in about an hour and a half. That was the idea of why the town's always trying to have their little, and you gotta, you gotta remember, these trucks have been, these are seventy eights?
No, they're 2000.
2000?
2000.
What was seventy eight?
The giant bear? Yeah, the giant bear was about.
They're twenty-three years old, these trucks. So they didn't get in the sequence of what they should have been.
I have a question on that. Um, I work for the county and we had, every time we replaced a car, we had like a fund, it was like $25,000 just for example, for this car. So we paid, we bought a new car, but like we started this fund, every month we put into this fund for this specific car. So at the end of five years, for however long you want, you have the money to replace it. Do you have something set up like that, like a fund to replace these?
All of it. Just exactly what you're saying we do.
Okay.
Just.
So we can go around, we, every, like, the streets and the lottery department, they, they basically pay rent. There's a, there's a schedule, um, the M map puts out that says how much a truck's worth with these different attachments and, and we charge by the hour, by the half hour, you know. So that we can put money into our equipment fund so we can do the replacement.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't say that at this point, funding is the issue. I mean, we're trying to use taxpayer dollars as wisely as possible, which I think is what this discussion is. The biggest problem is availability. The dump truck is three hundred days out.
The last four years, availability, like Sam just said, that this is what matters. Like, it was good throughout the last three, four years, and then we knew we had this trouble and then we wanted availability and we couldn't get it. And then when they say, I mean, we've ordered this brand new truck. I, I know it was last fall. Last fall, I talked to the people at D and K, and then we, I got D and K, it's gonna be a Freightliner versus a Western Star, whatever I can get first, Freightliners, what do we get? Went to International, they said, we'll call you when we think we can get you on the list. But once this thing's ordered, and then you've gotta get the attachments put on, I went and talked to the guy, he says, yep, we'll be able to get all that done in three hundred days. And he said it just like as smooth as he could. Three hundred days. I'm like, three hundred days? So, you, you're, you're correct, we had that funding available, we did a snowbox, we, we purchased tobacco. We, we got things that we needed in play along, we just didn't use these trucks as much other than during our winter. We knew we needed tobacco, we had an old John Deere, we got rid of that, so we, we're playing catch-up. The availability with the dump truck, we wouldn't have this conversation if we could have got, when we wanted to own a dump truck and order it and get it, the proper time to get one, if it was the case, we wouldn't have this conversation. We don't, we wouldn't spend this much if we had one. All right, well, we'll try to circle back to that, so at least everybody grabbed that idea and then Jessica, who's the clerk driver, what you got going on?
So, uh, they have done from downtown, and they said that they're hopeful by the end of September, all those will be let and available by or sign up for Xfinity, organize, you know, it's always a good thing. Um, taxes are due September 14th, and after that due date, we will be settling with the county, so all the illinquished will have to go through them after that date. Audit, obviously you just heard that, that went well. Um, I made this for the last meeting, so. The light at the corner, 52 Grand River, is up and running now. Um, email bills, still working with Josh to fix that issue, hopefully I don't have to manually send bills this billing period.
I hope. You see the lights up front, it's just blinking, it's not.
No, it's actually, no, it's blinking this morning.
It's running now.
It's running now?
Yeah.
So, because I talked to the guy, I was there all weekend, and there, the, the deal was connect to the railroads. So when railroad train comes through, they come on and helps that traffic, and it's gotta, they gotta read each other.
Today was the first time in forty-five years I did not stop at that intersection. It was green coming off M 52 and I just kept running.
Nice.
Good feeling.
And I was excited when I came home about quarter after one and I was like, whoa, the lights are on.
That's cool. It's cool.
I totally expected it at seven o'clock this morning when I went through. Still blinking. Maybe they started it.
And speaking of lights, um, the one down on Oak Street, the pole gun installed, the lights on, the wires ran. I think probably tonight will be the first time it's turned on.
It was on last week.
Was it on last night?
Yeah, I was out the end door today, he said, man, that light is nice. And I couldn't figure out whose lights were shining in my house.
Okay, so I went to bed early then.
Yep. Yeah, he said it's, he said it's really nice. He said, it's really gonna help down there.
Those guys mobilized pretty quick. I was in the process later. No, we, so, um, Brandon came out and, uh, he and I discussed it. We were actually able to save the village a little bit of money having him out there to actually walk in. And we said, well, the dis, the maximum distance they can put posts is two hundred feet. And that's why they were gonna do two posts, but we said, well, if we move, instead of having two lights, one light, we'll get just enough into, into the cul-de-sac. Then you only have to do one post and one light, so he's gonna be refunding us that difference. Okay. Pays to have people come out.
Slick. Josh Rocky, Warburg Downtown Development Authority, you hear anything to report to us? Did they put more wells over there by the parking? Yeah, just can't leave it alone.
Nope. No, those are in there till, uh, till we pave, and then the wall will still be there when they pave, but they wanted to mark them out and have them sitting there so that when they did excavation, they knew they were there, um, so they didn't get crushed or whatever, so.
There was a one time, they said, as long as it's a blacktop parking lot, they didn't have to have them, so we changed our mind.
I'm not sure. Whatever they found, however far they dug, they didn't like it, so the wells have to stay. But, uh, the, uh, one good news is we did finally close on the Ford building. So the DDA officially owns that now, so we're working on, uh, getting quotes for the roof repair. And I'm still working on grants to try to get some funding to restore that building. Hopefully to the original look it was back in like the forties. So, and then we'll start marketing after that and trying to find someone what to do, but if we can hopefully mobilize it fast enough, it'd be nice to be able to possibly even open it for like a indoor farmers market for the winter. If we can get stuff done. Contractors, it's gonna be hard for the, the roughest number one issue that needs to be addressed as quick as possible.
How much money do you think that's gonna be, is rough?
Right now, we're between like, I think we're between forty and like, I mean, the highest would be nice. But, you know, fifty, around fifty seems to be about pretty middle ground for everyone. So, and that's actually repairing the roof that's there, fixing the drains in the roof, and then, um, that spray foaming the whole roof and then putting a, um, uh, cover, latex cover over top of it. So it'll be white, which will help with energy efficiency, and then it'll also have a layer of insulation, so that, that will also help with keeping heat in the building, so longevity, which should be pretty good. That most of the places are saying that. With that system, they don't give a whole lot of warranties for commercial roofs, it turns out. But they're saying you usually get about fifty, sixty years out of that program.
You got people on your DDA and there was some grants to try and help do it, that, I know you've done a lot of that for, so.
Uh, not really, not related, we usually just do it, so. But, uh, then we're, uh, Farmer Field Day, we're pushing forward with that, we have, uh, so Homecoming Parade will be on, uh, and Farmer Field Day Parade will be on Friday. There's a lot of stuff going on, on, on Choice Farm Market, they're doing a bunch of stuff, and then Saturday morning, the block between Main and Summit will get shut down really early in the morning. I've gotta be here for that, so that's gonna be fun. Shane said he would love to help too.
That's a gobby job.
You guys own brands there. Um, but we are only gonna, um, shut down, um, for Saturday, we're only shutting down from this side of, or that side of Main Street, um, to Summit, so Main Street will still be accessible. And there'll still be traffic that can turn either way from Grand River there.
What, is that the 29th of September or?
Yeah, 29th and 1st. And then we have, um.
Is it 29th or October 1st?
Yeah, go. And so we have, uh, a tent coming in that's gonna be put right on a grid over, they're doing that Saturday morning, it'll take down Sunday afternoon. Still working out, I'm trying to get an ax throwing competition, trailer to come in. We're gonna have cornhole tournaments going on, Oxburgs are gonna be served, uh, both out of Choice and then at Mitchell's. And Mitchell's is able to, uh, um, do a syrup license for, so a lot of that area will be generally fenced off. But they'll be able to actually serve alcohol on this whole block. Um, the grandstand comes in, which is a big trailer, they come in and they fold it all up and it's got speakers and it's got plates and everything. And Bill Moran is playing during the day, um, day, early afternoon, and then the main show is Be Kind Rewind, which they are a, uh, nineties alternative rock cover band. They're a pretty big deal in Lansing. So they should bring a parade some following from that, though they play from seven eleven.
Seven eleven?
Yeah.
Speaking of, uh, the alcohol, uh, being served down there. We should look into it again, but I know that through the county liquor control board, DDAs are able to obtain a liquor license for properties that are being rehabbed.
Yeah.
Or, or something of that nature. And if we did that, we could finally use our social district.
Right, right. And that's, that's a poor thought for the, uh, for the Ford building too, is, um, I'm still, one of my big pushes has been trying to find a, um, I'd love to have a brewery or something come in there. Um, because I think that would be, love to see something come in there that brings a draw to people and then brings people from other communities and into town. I think that would be a huge asset to have. Um, I was trying to talk like Bells and a couple of the bigger breweries that are more on the west side of the state of seeing that they would be interested in doing a micro brewery, and with the DDA controlling the property now, we can actually afford to give them kind of a, you know, give some of these businesses a sweetheart deal to try it, because the biggest thing is they have, they look at the demographics and they're like, well, that's a lot of overhead if we have to do a build-out, we have to do wall maintenance, then we have a lease agreement where we have to buy the building. Where the DDA could possibly, if we find the right person or the right company to come in and try it, we can kind of give it, let them try it and give them, you know, a pretty low lease with like an option after a couple of years if they made good and everything's awesome. Buy the building from us and then we can do the box, which, you know, that's ideally finding something, finding a business that can come in that will draw people from other communities, really, really wanna do. So, but we are talking about possibly two of carving out that corner. And again, this is all, but, um, I really wanna see that corner get fixed, get paved, and possibly put a patio, a public patio right on that corner. Maybe have the building, put a couple murals on the building, kind of just have a public patio that anyone can go over to Mitchell's, get something to drink, go over to Noah's and get some, or happy days when they open, you can actually eat out there on the public patio. Just kind of cool, cool thing, so. But yeah, then, uh, back to Farmer Field Day, then Sunday, um, then Steve Takeover, we got Van Plan then, and then, uh, still Oxburgers, all that stuff, so. Pretty, pretty cool.
Any questions for?
Yeah.
Yeah. Behind the Ford building, the alley, yeah, there is a, I walk every night, so I walk down from Main Street down Summit Street. Closer to Summit Street, um, there is a water main or something right there.
It's a valve, that's leaking right there.
Yeah, it's le, it's been leaking since March.
Since the water main project.
It's been leaking since March, and it's, so, I didn't know, I mean, if it's, is it gonna be fixed? Is that, is that, are we paying for the water that's running through there every day? There's gotta be gallons and gallons of water. The Billy, is, is the Billy paying for that? Is the taxpayers paying for the lot of water going through there or what?
There's probably not much water going through there.
Oh, I think there is.
What, is the hydrant leaking? No, it's about leaking down the ground.
So who's paying for it?
Who's paying for that water coming through it? Ultimately, the taxpayer.
Ultimately, it's probably the taxpayers.
Yeah, so why isn't I, I mean, it's been, I've been walking since March and it's been.
It hasn't been March, it was when we, when we turned the valves to do the cut-off.
No, I think it's been March.
Yeah.
Or April anyway.
Yeah, it was, when we did the cut-off and threw the water main, since we had to shut that valve down, we had no reason to touch it before that.
So, I mean, it's thousands of gallons that.
There's always a puddle in the dry.
The taxpayers are paying for that water, so I'm. So I'm just wondering, how are we, you know, how are we gonna fix that?
It's gotta be dug up and replaced.
So why hasn't it been done, it's been?
Well, first of all, it hasn't been since March. I know, I know when, I'm the one that turned it and started it there. And I know when that was, and that was a water main project.
Summit Road by the post office right there? Right?
At the.
You know, the Ford building?
Is that person's house?
I guess they named it, so I just assumed it was raining.
So where's the water going, right?
Pardon me?
Where's the water going to go since March? Like down the ditch?
There's the water main, there's the water shut off, like he said.
Where's the water? Like it's above the ground, right?
It comes up through the ground, obviously, goes down, um, drain.
There's a great driveway.
Into the driveway there, and then like it drains into the drain and forget also.
Well, we're gonna have, we'll get them, we'll address it. We'll use the back trucks.
Uh, we're gonna have to shut off half the town and then figure out, so.
Perkins will get it fixed.
I'm paying for the water, so. I'm paying for it, so I know it's, you know, I want it to be fixed.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go up north, so let's shut it down then. But yeah, I, my water main, when it got flushed, it took, it took probably a month or it's quite leaking. The top nut, I tried to tighten myself, but it just, it was.
Well, generally, a lot of them won't, there was one over there by Rob's house that it would leak and then it would seal up. And it would leak and it would seal up.
Might eventually sealed up, but it looked like, it looked crappy until it did.
Yeah.
Rusty and jucky and. But, I got you. All right, we will, I know we are struggling on some of them that don't shut off in the ground. And we have had people go around to help us find a couple more shut offs that we didn't have that was on paper. The one thing is that we will have to address if we repair this to make sure, have to notice the town, how long it takes to shut. How big is it, six inch? Is it eight or six?
Yeah, it's only four inch valve, but you gotta shut down all the water coming to it.
Yeah.
So one's gonna be an eight inch valve, then there's probably gonna be a couple six inch valves, yeah.
And then we had a plan for when, I know there was another project, the Alan was like being part of it. So were we planning on doing something like this soon that was in that area? Why didn't you let it stay leaking?
Uh, well, we finished up with water main project, with the Main Street project.
No, okay.
And now we're going into that lane project.
The Appleen project, and in the meantime, is there anybody that can help us on the other? We'll get on.
We just basically wanted to make sure you knew because it's been there for so long.
Yeah.
And this one, that house has got a passive puddle in the driveway from it, and it goes down into the drain, so. It was like, cause it hadn't been fixed, and so a lot of people just wanna make sure someone knew.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we, we had one, we, it's not uncommon for them to leak. But generally, with the higher content in water, they generally seal themselves off. And a lot of times, it's not all the way, it's not all the way open. Sometimes you turn it down a little bit and you can find a sweet spot where it tightens up enough for it to seal. And, I mean, the expense of the valves, probably 2,500 bucks, and you're gonna have 5,000 into excavation on it. So it's, you know, it's not something to take lightly, spending, you know, almost $10,000 to get it fixed.
Well, we probably paid that in the water already anyway, so.
And there's no shut off prior to that section?
Uh, yeah, there's shut offs all over, we're finding one that's gonna shut it down enough to change it, it's fair.
When you get to that point?
All those valves in that area are from 1950, 1960.
So you shut off, it means you can't just be ready for more than shut off than what you expect.
Ideally, you should be able to shut off, if that leaks there, you should be able to shut off three valves and stop it. But that's never the way it is. You're gonna shut off.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You could have, we've shut 13, 14 valves off before trying to get water to stop.
Yeah, I saw that on Chestnut Street.
But we'll get them, we'll get them, we'll get there.
That's why I brought those in water main.
More info, it's been a long time, I mean, the 27 Bandit, it's up Grand River toward. Super bad. All right. We'll make a note of that. And then, facing the Jim Wright or Ernest Officer, you see the report that he gave us when he was going, okay? Any questions? Lisa report, Sandra.
Um, I don't have anything to report. There is a special meeting on Thursday pertaining to the revenue sharing agreement, so.
We still have a.
So I guess I will find out on Thursday what it is that.
Oh, yeah, Dorothy was at our E A game, and her and Norma Lee in the middle of the meeting were able to hash out the few things that they needed to adjust.
So they just have to like kind of.
And I do see that he sent it to her, I wanna say it was like the next, two or three days later, he sent her the signed and write copy. So she was just gonna need to execute that and I can execute it. And then that way I have to go through the plan amendment, get the plan amendment done, which involves a public hearing and bring it in front of the council for them to approve our plan amendments, so we can officially say we can spend that money.
So you could go start a Thursday meeting then?
Yes, yeah.
And what time?
Uh, 7:00 PM.
And then?
Yes, so if you'd like to call, please do. Might need some support.
Great, great.
I think, I, I think it should be all, I mean, Dorothy was happy with it.
Yeah, she's.
All the wording was good with it, and, you know, obviously the DDA has already approved it for two years, you know, so, you know.
And.
We're planning on approving every, my, my plan is to approve it way before it's even gonna expire. Every, every year, you know, push it off for another year, as long as, as, as I've said, as long as our revenue doesn't change. I mean, that's the only, that's gonna, you know.
And I do have to say, the board was very excited that, you know, you guys just did on your own, decided to just extend it another year, so.
Well, I mean, that's the whole point, is trying to make sure, I mean, it's not a long process heading, so it's nice to get it finally, finally at the finish line, so once we get the, um, the plan amendment stuff done, then, you know, we get to write the check and be onward upward.
So we'll see, we'll actually do the same thing, right?
Let's see on Thursday.
Exactly. Okay, Scott Goulart, hi, thank you, how's it going?
Great, um, let's see, so the 425 agreement, uh, that was with the Leroy Township or the, what was to be a development back in 2005. We voted on relinquishing that 425 agreement back in February of 2022. And a supplement to that, uh, I don't think there's any minutes or resolutions on record from that meeting. Anyway, fast forward, um, what we thought was resolved has come back around and Leroy Township has informed us that in fact, 425, the, the status from agriculture has switched back to residential, is that how we got noticed?
It was agriculture and then scaling and everything went into school, it went into residential, so we bought 150 houses over there in Grand River. By the highway, and then they called or asked to switch it back to agriculture.
Oh, okay, and, um, and so, uh, part of the process of relinquishing a 425 is that, uh, the resolution here, which was actually performed in February of last year, we'll, I guess we can reaffirm that, that vote so that we actually have approximately minutes of it. And then from there, I'll take the resolution, I have to give it to the county commissioners, they have to, uh, rubber stamp it effectively, adjusting the boundaries, uh, for tax reasons, and then that thing will be behind us, so. I guess we can talk about that more if we need, oh yeah, it's number four on the new business, so. Um, as to White Rose, Jim Wright, contact me, wanted an update as to, um, we have a court order for the fact that White Rose does not have a certificate of occupancy. Uh, I emailed a formal letter to the attorney for White Rose stating that it's our intention to execute the judge or the, uh, the court's order, effectively evicting anybody in that building unless White Rose performs appropriately within 14 days of that letter. And that went out last week. I have not heard back from the attorney nor from, uh, White Rose, the company. So it was next week we'll know and if, whether or not they're gonna comply, and if they don't, then we'll seek the assistance of the Indian County deputies to lock up White Rose. So that's on the horizon with that piece. Go ahead.
Do you have more to say on White Rose or no?
Uh, no, it's, we're still in a holding pattern as to the other.
Okay, cause I was, I will say, to their credit, I drove by a couple hours ago. The outdoor storage is way better than it has been in a long time. It got worse for a while, and it's probably about as half as what it was when it was at its worst.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's good that here is moving in the right direction. I will say from the last council meeting till now, so what I've been doing is every time I come into town, I try to take a couple pictures of it. Cause part of the argument by the attorney for White Rose is, or was, well, we were just cleaning out hole barns, and so we just set the stuff outside long enough so we could clean the inside, and we were just taking it back in. So I took a series of pictures over the last six months, the same stuff sitting outside. And rather informally, I just sent these pictures from my phone to the other, the other attorney and said, you know, if your argument is that this is only property maintenance, it's the same stuff every council meeting, or every time I go to Leverville. And maybe that's why they're moving on it, because they realize that they're losing their very argument. And that was the core of their argument in a lot of ways, so, um, and I think they probably know that if push comes to shove, if we have to go any further, I'm building, I, I'm creating a little bit of a treasure chest of evidence to say all your arguments are without merit. In fact, now we have reason to believe that you didn't even have the merit on the first defense of these items, so. I'm hoping that's the case, I'm not trying to take credit for it, but that's some of the correspondence that you're going on, kind of on the backside with White Rose. Um, Alpha Omega, I received a letter from Alpha Omega's attorney. A lot of smoke to me, uh, no substance at all. They're making such claims that our code officials, uh, our, uh, government here at Leverville is not business friendly, that, uh, a lot of people, business people are upset with the, the government here. Gave a bunch of examples, only like, code enforcement will tell us what's wrong or, they would never give us dates or times or any facts that I could even double check to see, okay, what happened here? So I called the attorney, um, and he, I said, look, first of all, I, I I believe that Leverville is very pro-business, and if any business owner has any grievance as to any items that you're citing in your letter, we have council meetings that are published all the time, they come in here, even on citizen comment, and air their grievance, so to say. Because part of his argument was, well, the count, they feel like the council won't do anything. And I said, yeah, but if these people who are upset come in and voice their opinion, there's still record of them being there. There's still record of their grievance being recorded, they can't just put their head in the sand. In fact, I may mention that you often come here. And I said, we have a DDA in town that's very pro-business, and if anyone, you know, is not comfortable getting up in public and speaking their piece, they can contact the DDA, they can talk to somebody in confidence and say, look, we got a problem, but as far as I'm concerned, unless you give me the facts of something in violation of local code, I think your arguments are without merit, there's just no proof to it. He said to me that he's gonna try and get some more information, I believe it when I see it. So at this point, um, they're still in violation because it sounds like although they put the place up for sale, there's still an issue with, uh, Alpha Omega coming, unless Jessica, did they come in and, they did, okay. They were supposed to come in and pay off, uh, the permit fees, pick up the permit, to go forward with any construction that involves that property they're on. I instructed their attorney as to what steps needed to be done, that their permit should green light go as long as they pay this fee and be done with it, but, uh, that was last week, and if they still haven't shut up, it just sounds like they're just trying to buy as much time as possible. So even if they sell the building, they have to disclose to the buyer that there are these pending issues with the village, and that could actually complicate their transaction, so. They'd be wise just to fix this thing once and for all, but I don't think they have any legal argument actually as to something the village has done wrong, I just think they're, it's void of any substance. So they don't want my opinion about that, and apparently they don't, they haven't done anything to fix it. Otis Elevator, I have not received any actual documentation confirming that they, um, have agreed to walk away from the, the contract. I will say, at this point, I'm okay with the village going forward with another contractor for the elevators. I have the email from Otis Elevator, I think that would suffice if, if a question ever came up is, hey, where are you guys going? Um, in fact, I can even write a letter to say, hey, I'm just writing to confirm that on our, on your email on this date, both parties understand that this contract is no longer in place and just, it'd just be cheap insurance to make sure that they never came back around trying to bite us somehow.
I'd appreciate if you did that.
Okay, make that happen.
Yeah, if you can do that, then maybe for next meeting, have.
Jessica, can I touch with American says it there?
Is it still here or you moved on it?
Yeah. So we're gonna just wait for.
Yeah, I was just worried that you guys would jump into the next contract. I was hoping that Otis would provide, hey, this is over. But yeah, you guys are pretty light in the community, so. The last time, the last meeting, we were discussing about the bond involving Jamie Hord, um, as to a roadmap as to where to go from here. At this point, I still have concerns with the bond, I still think for the fact that Jamie Hord concealed her malfeasance that for us to be on the hook for the remainder of what the bond would have covered is inappropriate. I've got a call into, uh, Michael Forster with the MML. He's supposed to be getting back to me on this matter. There's not as much case law out there as I was hoping for, um, so it's a little murky yet, but we have six years for statute limitation to take action on a contract, and that's what a bond would be a contract, so. Unless you guys just said, hey, that's it, walk away from it, otherwise, if you give me, hopefully by the next council meeting, I would have more information as to whether or not it's feasible to proceed effectively against MML to recoup those losses, which they're saying they're not responsible for.
You paid for it, for all Wisconsin people have that honor, so.
But yeah.
It needs to be to do their job.
Yeah.
And there is one issue, you know, they gave me a little bit of, they didn't title it this, but it's almost like an opinion of title or an opinion of loss, where they are willing to recognize from April 2021 to April 22, the loss. They won't go after that period of time, they won't go back. And my point to them would be, thank you for that one year, that's great, but we put you on notice, so give us 20, April 20 to April 21, you know, back them up and have them off the two individual bond. Cause I, it's almost like they think that I'm asking for 100 grand inside of one year. And that's not the case, effectively, we're asking for 50 in 20, the year 21, and 50,000 in the year 20.
And we were working on it, knowing there was a problem, and the state of Michigan was here. And we used three different identities to get to where we resolved it.
Right.
So it wasn't like we were not in attention, we finally resolved it, and now.
Well, 100% of what you're saying, had we known that this problem was existing and we never just, we never put the claim in and time went by? Yeah, I, I agree, they would be like, hey, we can't wait for, we can't live our lives not knowing if you're gonna bring a claim in. But in this situation, we were trying to figure out the problem, and as soon as we found out about it, I mean, within a couple of weeks of having the, the goods, the evidence, we were making that call to MML saying, hey, look, be aware, you're on, you're now on notice that something's coming down the pike, so.
It's unreasonable of them to expect us to file the claim not having full accurate accounting of information of how much loss there was during that year.
Sure, I mean, it's, it's almost ludicrous that, and I said to him, well, if this is gonna be your policy, we'll put a claim in every year? And we'll just find out if anything went wrong. Who wants to live like that, though? I mean, that's not good for them nor us, so I mean, that's, that's the legal argument on that piece, but, uh.
Especially for them in the state here, prior to pipeline.
Right, I mean, if there was things going wrong and we just looked the other way, all right, fine, but for the fact that the state of Michigan was in here, that Plant Moran, I mean, let's face it, Plant Moran, as good a job as they did, they didn't find it right away, and these are pros. I mean, that, that's a top notch outfit that had to dig into this stuff, so. they didn't find it right away. And these are pros. I mean, that that's a top notch outfit that had to dig into this stuff. So I don't know. I still think, I'm hoping, worst case scenario is if I can find an edge to where I can make a legal sound argument as to why they need to pay on more than one bond, even if it's not a hundred percent below proof, it could be enough to bring them to the table and at least negotiate numbers short of litigation. Say, hey, look, if you lose, you're on the hook for another fifty thousand. But if you work with us, something, you know?
And I remember the phone conversations with Plant Moran saying, you need to get with M M L to make sure, cause he kept saying we were covered, we were covered. Do you remember?
Oh, yeah.
I said, are you talking to them? Are you talking to them? So we do have Ryan calling or talking to M M L saying that.
Yeah.
Their bond.
They were, they were.
Yes.
Okay, it just seems that.
Right off the.
If someone's credit was taken in one year and someone was taken in another year, that it should be able to pay, be paid out in two separate years. It, you can't see what's happening if, you know, you're unaware.
Certainly.
And like you said, you know, the state was in and everything, but if, like I said, if it happened in one year and some happened in another year, then I don't understand why you can't do it.
Your your insurance on your vehicles, if we had something that happened a year ago and they finally got it done this year, our insurance has to pay for it?
Yeah, I mean, if you go in and something happened on the twenty-eighth of December and it's not done until January fifth.
Well, check it out.
Okay.
I want you to keep pursuing it because you shouldn't get away without being more emotional.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's it's maddening to me just on a on a principle level, like.
Yeah.
It's almost like boxing is in so tight. What are we supposed to do other than make claims whether or not, then they'd probably say we're making false claims. You know, so um that's where we're at. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Alan Boyer and the P E A group.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Scott, regarding Alpha and Omega.
Yes.
I mean, that's a classic case of fire ready aim. And, you know, I had a number of discussions with them early in the process where they should have known, even though they had already started without doing due diligence. So if there ends up being a discussion with uh their attorney and you're interested, I could pass on what I explained to them early on in the process.
Yeah, I mean, if you have stuff readily available, please email it to me. Otherwise, I'll give you a call and try and figure out a way to coordinate it. But you know, that's the tough part of sometimes dealing with attorneys is that you never really know what the client is telling the attorney. So if you have that stuff, it might make these conversations go faster.
Okay. Thank you. Um Shane mentioned Main Street. Obviously, it's very nearly done. We still have to go through this week and do the punch list items to make sure that, you know, everything is getting cleaned up and taken care of. Um we had a discussion with the contractor today regarding removing the signs that are out there. Now that it's complete, we don't need all the traffic control and the detours and everything. And uh we've also been dealing with a number of residential complaints related to not only the signs, but mailboxes. We've got a couple of minor drainage issues that we need to clean up. So we've been contacting some landlords. I don't know if you've gotten some complaints. Jessica has forwarded us any of those complaints. So we contacted Orlando ours to let them know. So that's very nearly done. And as you all can see, the striding got done, I think it was yesterday. So uh that seems to be working well. And fortunately, they were able to get the paving done before school started and that that was uh obviously important. We worked with the school to make sure we had a contingency plan if we needed it, but fortunately, we didn't need it. Um Apple Lane, uh as was mentioned earlier, is possibly going to start this week or it may be more likely next week. We do have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock in this room uh with the contractor and we've got a couple of things we need to work out. One of which is the village hasn't signed the contracts yet. And um I mean, we've got the bids, but the the formal execution of the contracts has not been done yet. And Bruce Wallace is here with me from our office. He's gonna be the kind of the project manager during construction of the project. And Bruce is a project manager and is a P E and also ends up being a C P A as well. So um he he can kinda covers all the bases. So I brought him here to kinda introduce him to the council and specifically Jessica. And if you want, we can sign the contracts tonight. Uh or if Jessica's authorized to sign them, she's gonna be here in the morning, we can sign them then. It's just at that point, once they're signed, the village gets a hard copy of it, the contractor gets a hard copy of it, and then we have one for for the contractor administration. So uh.
But if it goes right, I can be here at nine A M also. So either way, either tonight or tomorrow, I do plan on being there at nine.
Okay. Well, either way works fine. I wanted to have Bruce here tonight just to introduce him to everybody and uh, you know, so you're gonna see his face um more. And uh of course, he'll be here first thing in the morning for the pre-conning too. So uh we can do the signing then and just not take our council time this evening.
Okay.
Um well, we've got him and they're ready as well. So.
That do we, we're not prolonging it because we did sign it quicker, right?
No.
Okay.
Right.
I do a lot of emails at this time of year.
No, that's uh not an issue. When we talked to the contractor last week, he thought he might start yet this week. Um. Yeah, and he was being held up on another project out in Ann Arbor or somewhere. He was being optimistic to start this week. So it likely will start next week.
Jason Sebastian.
Jason Sebastian.
Okay.
Isn't it the same people that did me?
No, it's not. It's a different contract.
Right. Jason Sebastian did our industrial park out there and our new road out there. You been out there? There's a nice new, nice road out there towards high.
But some of the work, since we knew that there was a water main contract, some of the work that the contractor that did Main Street did was to set it up to make it easier for the Apple, Apple main, Apple water, like water main door. So.
So are they getting new water and are they getting curbs too?
They are not getting curbs. They will get a new pavement. Um and part of it is we have added onto the project to at least temporarily repave Main Street from each all the way to Party Road, just to make it smoother and last till we get the M dot money in twenty twenty-five to finish rebuilding Main Street. So.
I just wanted to point out that I I've heard a lot of people on Apple Lane talking about, you know, where they're gonna be. And I know you probably don't know yet, but where they're, where they're gonna have to park and make their driveways and on Main Street, we, the resident on Main Street, the communication was not very good. I got a call at work from a neighbor that said, I can't get him a driveway in four days. You know, so the communication, I mean, at one point, the contractor, they put notes on our front door that they were gonna have water on, but we never knew, you know, when had the curves in. We worked more than he had to park somewhere else for four days. Cause they did it like, so it was pulled down the weekend or whatever. And then the paving wasn't as big a deal, but if he came in at a certain time and it was too wet, so he'd go away and had to park. But I don't know whether the communication should have come from the contractors or from the village, but we were never notified, hey, curbs are going in this day, you won't be able to use your driveway for four days.
Well, in in general, I think the communication comes from the from the village. However, you know, we've got an inspector out there and I think we'll just make note of that, that, you know, as we understand from the inspector, when things are gonna take place, there's not that many houses. We can knock on doors and let people know.
Yeah.
You know, we're coming up to your driveway and.
That would be helpful because it was, it was tough on Main Street. I mean, we love the road, but that was the toughest part, I think. And and I thought the contractors, those guys, did the best they could. I mean, I have no complaints about those guys. They were friendly. You know, they helped the neighbor across the street get brochures in, which they partnered a driveway and.
And you gotta remember, the public, Village of Leverville School accelerated this two weeks prior to the sign.
Yeah, I've heard that too. Yeah.
So that true.
True.
A hundred percent.
In the future, just to look ahead, I think that if you guys can communicate.
It took two weeks away.
Even if you know it's gonna happen that week even, but we didn't even have that notice. It was just like, oh, we can't park now.
Right. At least the days notice would have been great. Unfortunately, my husband had to drive his truck down everybody's, cross everybody's front of their yard.
Front yards.
To try to get out because we had extra vehicles and we needed that vehicle for the weekend. So at least the day before, if you could put like an agenda like on the Facebook or something, in addition to talking to him or let him know tonight before, that would be great. Because I know they did ask about or did say something about closing something off when my son was home, but that was like, he was the only one home and he was home for a half hour and leaving and everybody else had already went to work. So it's like.
So let me, let me ask the question. Do you know if the residents in the village um regularly check either, does the village have a social media presence?
Yeah.
A Facebook page or?
We, it happened so fast, we didn't even know it. So the only way it would have worked is if, if we were really the guy that was out there saying, look, it's not raining, we're two weeks uh taken away and we're gonna be able to put the curbs in tomorrow. Cause everything went great today. So they just had to go knock on the doors.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, my point is, is that, you know, our inspectors are pretty social savvy, social media savvy. If they talk to the contractor in the evening, you know, they may have a good idea of what's going on the next day. And if if it gets posted on a Facebook page, then if people check that regularly, I mean, I'm not one that does that, but if people do, then if that would be helpful, that we could certainly take and make an attempt at doing that.
I would think that would alleviate some pain on you if you're knocking on doors saying, hey, this is what we're doing, but check that Facebook page for updates. This might change on a regular basis. I mean, so you're alerting them.
Yeah.
So nobody's blindsided.
Okay, that's that's easy enough to do. I mean, I was trying to do my best. I called Shane, everyone, you know, when I had started seeing a little action and get some information from him and I'd post what I could on the page to make sure it was being, you know, being updated. But yeah, I mean, it was, it seemed to be that people were most frustrated because there was just no communication or it was very short notice communication, like the morning of, like, you know, hey, you have to park somewhere else because you can't park here, you know, or, you know, one lady that I think said that she was in the shower or whatever when they came by and she gets out and she can't, you know, she's having a hard time getting out of her driveway. So um so yeah, I mean, I think, I think, yeah, going forward, I think projects would be better if if we could get a little bit of communication that we can throw it up. I mean, even if your inspectors, you know, they can get, get my, my cell phone number even, just text me what the update is and I pop it right up there instantly.
Okay.
And they'd love to see you off.
And if they're not getting curb, it might not be as big an issue because they always made sure like if they were digging a hole like right at our driveway, we can soak it out through the neighbor's driveway or, you know, they were really good about, it's just that one part was the biggest, the curb part. And I realized that things, we knew that was gonna happen, actually, weeks ago.
Yeah, cause I mean, I ran into it with our water because I'd be sure at the one meeting that, you know, they put in the notice on our back door of our office first thing in the morning when they're gonna shut the water off for the whole day, which is problematic. I could obviously tell the tenants that, but I also, you know, I ended up suddenly just saw my guys home because I didn't have a functional bathroom. So.
And, you know, there's multiple ways of doing it. I mean, you could even get everybody's email address and just set up a group email and, you know, send people emails. Um, okay, well, uh.
I think Facebook using works because I feel like everyone, the neighbors will share if there's something that's on Facebook. They usually share information with everyone. So I mean, I seem to get anytime I did post, post updates, it seemed to funnel pretty fast.
Well, and and I'm glad to know this because, you know, quite frankly, um the project went really well and you know, although there are always issues and we know that the there are complaints, the complaints were very, very minor and, you know, there were um lots of complimentary things said and we appreciated that. And the contractor was was very complimentary of the village. So.
I think they, I mean, they were rock stars, but getting the short notice from the school that they had to be done quicker and they, you know, and luckily we have very favorable weather for them, for the most part. So.
Yeah, they 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 did well and Shane and I held hands with the school and, you know, great many things that. So that.
We gotta take a picture of that.
Cause somebody would post it on Facebook. So but that's, that's all I have. So if somebody's got a question, so.
We're all warm and buzzing again.
Okay. Well, then we will be back at nine o'clock in the morning with books to sign and.
I'll be here.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it looks great. I really, I was amazed that they were over the cars, but why it's gonna come back and do the concrete now is that was nothing. So.
You said they're gonna fix some manhole covers?
Yeah, there's a couple of them. Shane and I were talking about that early and I drove up and down there this evening and three or four of them were rattling. So.
I was saying, I wanted to run right from the school when I picked up Paisley today. It was like super loud.
Yeah.
I was like, that's probably.
Yeah, that's the other thing. So the whole point of the concrete rings is to make a nice smooth ride and that didn't happen. So.
Okay. We do appreciate it, Alan. Always.
And recognize this man's face because he will be around here. So.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Talk to you in the morning.
Have a good night.
Thanks again. Appreciate you guys coming on. All right, let's do, uh, anything I have before, but of course, before we go into business.
You were gonna top to the drink.
I mean, actually, you know, I will, the only thing I know is the works to do. How long more we hope we get fixed right or get bigger, do that right.
And the corner.
Yeah, all right. Yes, I was talking. The water, didn't see that one. Fix. You have anything with the school after the up and running? Did it have any problems with the water? Did it?
Um, they just had to flush everything really good.
Cause it's set so long, it just doesn't go. All right, before we go for new business, we have advocate report. Is there anything else we didn't touch? We will pursue that widely. Um I'm glad Main Street did get done and no harm done, but we'll try to have more communication. But nothing better than a guy walking and talking and then we get that involved and then we'll get Facebook between Josh Rocky at the D D A and hopefully Uptown and, cause there's gonna be more of these projects to improve our town.
Yeah, and just unfortunately, when the rocking and talking, people leave at all hours of the night. We leave our house at two o'clock in the morning. From two o'clock to seven o'clock, we're leaving our house to go to work. So we're missing everybody, you know? So I think secondary communication is very important.
We'll get through it and we'll get this backup all the way to Party and hopefully we get more sheriff in town deputies. So we'll have speeders. Um, yeah.
I know Jim's not here tonight. It was more of a code enforcement issue, but I keep thinking, not to pile on the uh Alpha Omega issue, but is that becoming an ordinance violation, that field that they created? I mean, does that not violate the non-just wave ordinance that?
I was wondering.
It just looks so bad.
It wasn't supposed to, but.
I know they were supposed to turn into water retention, which I guess never happened, but it's like, okay, you took down the trees, now it's grass, but now it's an overgrown field.
With ground up milling and.
Yeah, piles of stuff everywhere. I just, I don't know. I don't know if there's anything that's in the ordinance that would allow Jim to kinda coax them along to address that.
They can send a water to them and then the guy will cut it.
Yeah, cause it went.
I don't know if you wanna cut that. You might have to brush it off.
Right. But it went from, you know, tree and natural grown, now it's like a, an area should be owned.
And that's where I guess it's a fuzzy line, right? Of is it lawn? Is it small trees? You know, at what point does an overgrown yard become a wooded area, you know? But I'd like to see if there's something that can be done about that.
Okay. You got that, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All I have.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to new business. T H effort quote, will that do it? The price is on here?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Eleven thousand one twenty?
Yeah, but we'll go through that pump and to have that as a spare. That's where our main will stay soon on Party Road.
Okay. Hey, this is. Hey, this is why I make a recommendation.
Help you out.
Yeah.
Did you start?
I help him make a motion to approve the timing material estimate, um, number MS two three zero two zero five, not to exceed the amount of eleven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay. Okay, discussion and from TH effort, yeah, sounds good. And non-proco.
Sholby?
Yes.
Sholberg?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Walter?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, long time coming on this AIS backhoe. So we were the two, we never paid any maintenance, even back in the winter time when they came out to the shop. And we actually take it, we took it to their shop. There's two different invoices. Field worker that came here, which was eleven thousand, and then they had twelve thousand at their shop. We, as I worked with it and I went there three different times myself, they only have us responsible for fifty one hundred dollars. And they will give us thirty thousand dollars for our backhoe that we don't want back, that continues to have the same problems. For fifty five thousand, we can have a two thousand seventeen. The warranty is thirty days, but that's usually what that is. But this is a two thousand seventeen backhoe, fifty five thousand dollars. I recommend to the council that we go forward with this.
So out of my own curiosity, I looked into this and it's not, I guess it's not terribly surprising on the trade-in. There's right now twenty one, uh, four ten J's for sale across the country. Average price is about fifty grand. So trade-in is about half of retail.
You don't pay forty?
Forty two.
Yeah, you pay forty two.
Yeah, well aware of that. And so, I mean, that, that combined with, I actually looked up AIS's contract through MyDeals and they have pricing available for, so we're looking at a three ten SL, um, a three ten P, so similar size. Brand new retails a hundred fifty eight thousand through MyDeals, there's a thirty eight percent discount, so it would only be ninety eight. So if not a whole lot more, we could have a brand new one that's under warranty.
So with this deal like this, which you can go back and you can talk to this Josh, but they waived the field of eleven thousand dollars that we did not pay. And then when they worked that up there, I think they ended up warranting the nine thousand dollars. So whatever you want to come up with, then we would be responsible for.
So if we don't do this.
If you come up with the eighteen thousand dollars, we definitely would have to write a check for something if you wanted to go differently.
Is this the one they waived fees on because they thought something was wrong and then it wasn't wrong?
Yeah, they were pretty apologetic when they were up there three different times. There was one part that they thought they changed was, that wasn't it. So they had another gentleman there that was, when you take your equipment to actual location, sometimes the guy goes by and goes, I know I ran into that before. So they pushed down on the stick that actually runs a mechanism in the back of the backhoe and automatically all the mechanisms will start moving. So there's a, there was a gel, they call it a gel coat or some type of gel that's in there. And once that fluid starts shortening out, then it just had its own mind. And then they replaced that to somewhat, but they said it's a poor design.
Same wood is the difference between the two with this one and the one you found? Is it the same warranty?
Um, so it's whatever the new warranty from Deere would be. I'm not sure of what they offer these days. They're similar, it's just I think the three ten, um, because it's two thousand seventeen, they don't make that specific model. I think the.
They change models.
Yeah, the three ten P is just the twenty, twenty-three version of the SL. I don't know Deere that well, but, I mean, three ten, they're, that one I looked at, I think was also ninety eight or under horsepower or same, about the same speed, about the same spec.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna go back to the hydraulic, complete hydraulic system or electric over hydraulic?
This one I believe is, is hydraulic. I have.
It's not, I know it's not the same, but I've been lying, it's like, it's got foot pedals to it, it's not the same. But there, there could be some more still, the topology gives you a little bit of electric over hydraulic versus the old manual, but it's not the same system.
It's not a total control machine.
Yeah, way different. That was one of the things they mentioned is like, we don't want you to try to make this work because we can't get parts, you know, like what we're gonna run into there. The degenary off, off-ranks, that is not a good thing. Um, warrant, I mean, like, other than the, this electrical mechanism, so you didn't use your feet, the tractor didn't have a problem with horsepower, you know? It's all about the electric over hydraulic mechanism. Rain had kept screwing this back a lot. You know, the engine, the transmission, them kind of things are, is made, they're made tough. You know, the bucket and them things, they don't usually wear out. What happens is you get the electric over hydraulic, if you get the wrong ECM that doesn't respond to the, that's where it becomes a problem. So I, I worked with them, Sam, I get it, we can, we can spend more time on it. I was shocked that they went from, I, I know you had the one checked and it was eleven something and then I got him down to nine on the other one. I said, well, what about the field guy? Can you get that lowered? And they came back and says, and I, I know you did the math, I, if they stayed with that, it's twenty three thousand. But they said, you guys get fifty one hundred bucks, thirty thousand trade-in. We really, we bought from them for forty two thousand. And so you would think that the value would went up over time that we had it, which we only had it, what, three years? But I know we purchased it for forty two, it worked right up until it didn't. And we submerged the back end in mud and stuff and that's what started acting up the electric over hydraulic, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just bring this up because, I mean, to do a trade-in, I've only got the issues of billing aside, you know, it would cost to get a six-year-old unit with two thousand hours would cost fifty grand versus if we settled the difference on the billing, sell ours on our own, if we get fifty for it and buy a brand new one for a hundred, you're still spending fifty thousand dollars and you're getting a brand new machine.
Okay.
It's the same cost, but better deal. I mean, there, there's inherent risk of how long does it take to find the right buyer? You know, can we get fifty, forty-five, forty? What's fair? I don't know. But I at least wanted to bring that also to the council to consider that that there's also a third option, which I've started to look into, which is leasing. Do we want to lease something and have it always be under warranty?
And what was the warranty on this?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Because if we get something used and something happens in forty five days and then we're putting more money out.
And then what would be the warranty on brand new, like two years?
I don't know. I, I don't know if anybody.
What do they, do they do like?
I don't, I go on radio, summer truck and I have thirty days, so there's no warranty anymore than I.
No, that is very true.
Especially for commercial stuff, because it's getting beat on.
And if you've got good points, then what you're saying too.
So with what, if we don't go with this, then we need to pay, we need to give them and pay the two invoices that we owe them since, I believe it was February, we started with the issues?
So they will only, they will only take off the money if we purchase this?
Not exactly this one unit, but they've been, they've been nice to us to this point where they found what was wrong with the one you have and then they found another one that would be more apt to say, look, we'd rather if you have this one, shouldn't take yours back, I'm not guaranteed it's gonna not give you trouble.
Right.
So we do believe that this is the route we're gonna take.
It's a thirty thousand dollar swing is what it is.
For a trade-in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you figure, well, no, I'm saying, you figure what the trade-in value plus the bill that is owed, you guys would be paying additional thirty thousand dollars for this other unit.
No, it's an additional fifty, so.
Oh, it's additional fifty?
Yeah, the two thousand seventeen is seventy nine thousand dollars.
Oh, geez, okay.
Versus a brand new two thousand twenty-three is ninety eight. It's not far off.
Is that, so I mean, you said AIS does MyDeals, right?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, that's, I looked at their contract on MyDeals website and they have a thirty eight percent discount off of MSRP for that.
Okay, so obviously you guys do the same deal with them, but you buy new.
Yeah.
Doesn't that mean that might be, then you're at, you know, what, seventy two thousand?
Yeah, and even.
So you're paying an extra twenty thousand dollars for a brand new unit that Shane doesn't have to worry might have problems?
Right.
And if there was an issue of timing of delivery, like with a dump truck, I don't know how long a new backhoe takes, but also on AIS's contract, they have daily, weekly and monthly rentals, which I believe what the discount is, I think it's thirty one hundred dollars a month to rent a copple of the three ten. So even if it was a matter of, well, we have to give them the trade-in and we don't get ours for another three or four months, we could rent one short term till newer shows up.
And work out a deal.
Right.
You know where you've been using in the meantime, because you don't have a backhoe.
Right.
Sam?
What?
Who's backhoe you've been using in the meantime?
Oh, yours.
Yeah. Fine, so.
That's why we should run one or lease one. So, right, we should do something.
I mean, the, the idea, because I talked to Sam a little bit about lease, because I was like, I hear from a lot of municipalities starting to lease everything. And I was like, well, depending on what that costs, that's not a bad idea to look for for some of this equipment because then you can try it out for, say, two years and then, you know, usually they'll do a guaranteed buyout. Or you're like, after two years, you're like, I hate this thing, let's say it sucks, let's figure out something else. You know, that might be another way to look at too, but.
This backhoe has low hours. I talked with one of my good friends that has a lot of John Deere backhoes. He has three of these three ten SLs down Stockbridge, Waters and Sons. So I'm still, at this point, I appreciate all the discussion, but I did a lot of homework on this. I've been up there three times. They softened the two bills that've been since February. They found this backhoe. The only one I asked to come up with fifty one hundred dollars, fifty five thousand dollars you can have is two thousand seventeen low hours, John Deere three ten SL backhoe. I still recommend the council was the way to go. We, I, I'm not a big lease person because if we damage it during lease, then you pay for it in full, like a hyperbole if you can't happen. My recommendation is council that we still go forward with fifty five thousand dollars and go with this John Deere three ten SL if the council will provide you with a new one.
So how many hours are on that machine?
Twenty hours.
So basically, six years old, basically that's our new machine?
Yep. It's a, I've looked at the paint.
Right, right.
Really get care of it, restored inside. It, it seemed to be that AIS was taking care of the ability of our goals to make sure that we didn't have no sour taste.
But I mean, that low hours is.
They waived the, guy come out to try to take it. There was a fee there and then they turned around and they, they called our backhoe up there as far as they waived that.
We don't have to. One person I haven't heard from is Shane. You're, you're gonna be the man running.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm less afraid of this backhoe than I was the fourth time after having it. I'm just worried that, because it's, we're mainly gonna use that for, uh, for our top back. Low, low trucks, low, you know, everything else. Um, I, I guess I don't, I guess it's six of one, a half dozen of the other. I think that regardless, we don't think this would be a lot of something. Like this would be, that's, that's pretty complicated.
And they have heard.
They have this, that we can start using it tomorrow.
This could be delivered tomorrow and your backhoe is still up there. It's been up there for two months.
And since they moved it.
Yeah, I, the only thing that, I mean, it's just, yeah. Sure, it'd be nice to have a brand new backhoe, but still, it's more like.
So you made the motion?
I, I did a recommendation, somebody's just got to say, show them.
Show them.
Yeah, somebody's got a second.
I accept that.
All right, so we had a discussion, but we've already had a discussion. I, I've done a lot of research, I know it's still a John Deere sort of a case. I talked with them, there's been three other people I talked to, but Waters has been a great friend of mine. He says he's got, he likes him, he hasn't had any trouble with it. But I will tell you, COVID wrecked any type of warranty, anybody pays.
Yeah.
It just, it's like our X mark.
Pretty much.
But not to get off track, but I, I've done my research, there's low hours on this vehicle.
Thank you.
Okay, but no damage, the dark detaches are all working on.
All right, that's, that's the, the only thing about that, if we use that full one bucket a lot, I don't, I, and I don't think that one has it.
It does not have it. Um, pinchy clamp it.
Is it, is it plumbed for broken hydraulics?
Nope, it's not. You got a nice backhoe, bucket, gadget, put your snowbox on, concentrate on your forks.
That's a good point, but key deals.
It could be a step for two years and then checks, but at this point, them two, everybody knows I was, I fell off the chair when they told me how much building for the field. It was eleven thousand something and I got the check and you and I give it back there and then I, we give them zero dollars in February, zero. And then the one up there, the guy said, I'm not gonna charge you for that part because it didn't work and we found the other part that was proper. But it was a generic part and fixed it, so they don't discontinue that part. He said, I don't, I said, well, why don't we just take our backhoe back, get this video on the prices to be repaired? He says, it's not gonna be any better than this, the backhoe's not. It was the first thing I did. What's that?
Nothing.
No, I mean, this is open for dispatch, they're going to a loan, go ahead, like.
I, I mean, I just said, so, so the person who's trying to take our money said it's gonna get no better. Shocker.
Yeah, well, you know what, you spent time up there and there was one guy involved that I didn't feel like I was giving much, then there was three guys involved. And they said, look, a lot of municipalities like this backhoe you guys got because they don't have to use their feet, but they didn't work. They took, they took the big machine and tried to put the, the hands-on mechanism for the back with the back and tried to convert that and it didn't work. So every one of them backhoes that had it, where they had it, we didn't have use foot controls, they had trouble. So they said, it didn't work for that four ten. So they, they just said, you just want to get away from that. If not, it's fixable, we discontinued that idea the way we're doing it. So this one here, everything on this two thousand seventeen, if you bought a brand new one, it would be exactly all of this stuff that's on this one. If you bought a grandma just like this one, it'd be just like the ECM, electronics, they're all the same, they work. And that's what they told me when I was sitting there talking to them. So. It definitely is a wild thing to do, but I did not like the, the maintenance cost of the two items. And the maintenance cost was all about the mechanisms on the back of the tractor, the back of the backhoe, so when you were moving it with the bucket in the front, the other stuff in the back started moving on its own. Is that right, Shane?
Yeah.
Yeah, all on its own.
And then I quit.
Yeah. And now who's it? Yep.
None of the hydraulics moved.
Right, none of the hydraulics, but the backhoe would go forward and backwards, but it shut down all the hydraulics. This three ten doesn't have them hydraulics. That, that system is completely gone, it's a new version. And they said this version and this one, this is two thousand seventeen, is the same as if you purchased the new one. It works, is what they said. So at that point, if there's an answer, this is to a roll call, so what happens?
Sholby?
No.
Sholberg?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Hitchcock?
Yes. Thank you. We'll get you back.
Boy, saying that would be handy.
Hope to fix the dump truck. You guys can, uh, again, yeah. I don't know what, we can record it wherever you guys would think. I thought of it, it was DMK. The only other one I can think of is Jackson Truck Service down in Jackson, Michigan, for another idea, but.
And on.
I mean, I know a bunch of transmission shops, I don't know if they do anything that big. I mean, I know a bunch of transmission shops. I don't know if they do anything that big. I can ask.
I can use a column or two.
Yeah, okay.
So I mean, it's, it's only, it doesn't one, is it only considered a one time?
No, no, it's a.
Medium duty?
Top kit, isn't it?
Oh, it's right. I'm thinking, I was thinking of going to drive this dump truck.
Yeah, um.
So it's like a forty five hundred.
See seventy five hundred.
Seventy seven hundred.
So yeah, so it's six time, four times, so you can haul six times. So I, I mean, we can, instead of saying we table, we'll just keep trying to figure out somebody else can connect and make this work better, but. The transmission where that is with the, the bottom blade, it's very tight. It's not really, so if you don't get the right person that doesn't want to work around it, they'll want to take off your bottom blade to try and change it. Um, let's just jump over that. Refirm February twenty eighth and twenty, we're going to re, reaffirm, right, Mr. Scott Will?
Yes, sir.
We're reaffirm February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two vote regarding four twenty-five agreement with the Leroy Township and Calder property, which is over by Graymore. So we already talked about this on our meeting on February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We just want to make sure we reassure that we revert back to the four twenty-five agreement. To get back to Leroy Township, so we'll go forward and get a resolution.
Yes, sir.
So recommended to the council that we reinstate the reaffirm of the February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, four twenty-five agreement with Leroy Township. For the Calder property on Graymore Road.
Sholby?
Sir.
Okay. Roll call please.
Sholby?
Yes.
Sholber?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Higginson?
Yes. So at this point, you've had that information, so we reaffirmed it. Now you're going to take and.
So Jessica will provide meetings, uh, tonight's vote. We have a resolution as soon as that draft is to meet with your signature. I will then, I bet, I already got the petition ready to go for the, uh, commissioners. I'll mail it off to them and then, uh, I don't know their schedule off the top of my head, but whenever that next meeting is, hopefully we can get in there. Being that we're already at the tail end of August and I suspect it would be nothing more than a rubber stamp. And there's nothing contentious about this, so.
So it won't go to Leroy Township first? It'll go to Mason to get stamped at the courthouse?
Correct, yeah.
And then why don't you take it to Earl, over to Leroy Township?
Well, from that point, it should be.
Done.
Should be done.
Okay.
Yeah, short of something going sideways, but, uh, just for the record, I have that vote of, as February eighth of two thousand twenty-two.
Oh, not February twenty eighth?
Yeah.
February eighth, okay, sorry about that.
Oh, it's all right. Just want to make sure that we get.
Cause we do the second Tuesday and then.
Yep.
So we're all right to make that on that eighth, right? Okay. Council already, okay with that too, but it wasn't the twenty eighth, it's the eighth.
It was the eighth, yeah.
Okay. Cause we can do it again.
No, I think we're good.
Okay. All right. So we'll do some more work on the, the dump truck to try to make that so it's not a problem. I will, for the, the village and the council people here, I will get with this Freightliner guy, cause he is the, what do you guys call it? Uh, not the MM, but he's the My Deal. So the, the guy I worked with is one guy, but then when they know it's a municipality, because all you gotta talk to this guy, My Deal, and he's over in the little cubby hole, special person. So I've been continuing trying to get this print on it. So I have the build date, uh, it's just too early yet and I keep asking, but we've ordered this Freightliner, single axle truck. Spring, like under March versus April, so I said, put slot. And then we, actually I think it was before that because we were trying to get in this year. So I'm going to continue to keep landing that with the Freightliner dealership. We don't, I don't really, I mean, we tried their national, but you don't want to order a national, is it a Freightliner or Western Star? And that's what the guys are doing, even out here at the garage. The Freightliner, every time you turn around, any part you need for a Freightliner, you get it in either. That's one thing about Freightliner.
And then even the Freightliner that I found out west that had all the right stuff, it was just an outdated configuration, so.
And I still think that us as council members in the village, wherever, if we can find one that's only five to seven years old, that we still need to grab that up. It's just, it's not there yet. And the ones I see that come into Buckley, they come out of Minnesota and Wisconsin. And for some reason, I don't know if they, because we don't have as much solder, it's so cold, they don't rust as bad as what we do. They, I think it's because the, we get warm up and then it cools off out in Minnesota, they may, they look like brand new out there. And, uh, but I've been talking with Walker, I at least probably call him every thirty days up there to Buckley. And we've bought a couple pieces of equipment from him, so we, we know him and usually that's what they do. They, they got a lot of them up there. With that said, um, anything else? Anybody else needs to bring to attention to the village, wherever they? Mm-hmm. Anybody want to do an adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-six.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the same side? We are adjourned. Thanks for all the conversation.